That's interesting.
(laughing).
I'd like to call to order the Budget Committee work session. And may we have a roll call, please?
Collins?
Here.
Chrisman? Pearson? Keller?
Here.
Canopa?
Here.
Holden?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Summers?
Ellen?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. And, uh, public comment tonight? Anybody here for public comment? Nope? Okay. You guys don't have to get up then.[55.23][55.23](laughing). So, we'll move on to budget issues with Wes and Stuart.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. We, as you recall, during our Budget Committee deliberations last year, um, we had indicated that we would come back to you about this time of year to talk about what our revenue picture looked like. And, of course, the timing of that is, to some extent, dictated by the fact that we get our, um, information from the county about what our property tax revenues will look like for the coming year, at this time of year. And, uh, it's a way for us to give you sort of a preview of what we expect, uh, the next budget year to look like. And, of course, I, it always confuses me, and I've been doing it for a long time, so I suppose others might as well. As you may recall, we're currently in budget year, fiscal year 2015. It will conclude, uh, on June 30th of 2015. And we have a budget for that period of time. And then we, we will, the, the next budget that we will be considering will run from July 1 of 2015 through, uh, June 30th of 2016. So, there's a, that calendar and fiscal year mismatch that trips up a lot of people, and just wanted to be, be clear about that. Before I get started, I did want you to know that I think we've resolved most of our financial problems. Mark Shepherd and I stopped at a, at a, at a Chinese place for dinner after coming back from a Airport Advisory Commission meeting that went a little long tonight. And, uh, Mark's, um, uh, fortune, which he offered up to me, was that new financial resources will soon become available to you. So, I'm taking that as a guarantee, and our work is done.[164.31][164.31](laughing).
Yeah, we're done.
Sadly...
Are the lottery numbers on the pack, Matt?
Sadly, no.[173.31][173.31](laughing). Um, and I wish the news was as good as the fortune cookie, uh, in terms of what we've actually received from, uh, from the county and, uh, in terms of, of property tax revenue. Now, Stuart, of course, I, I think has already sent you a copy of his presentation tonight, so you've had a chance to, to look at it. I'm gonna just really briefly summarize and say that, uh, we received kind of two pieces of bad news, not crisis news, not, you know, terrible news, but less than good news. The first was, is that we ended our last fiscal year, fiscal year 2014, uh, in turn, in the general fund, and that's what I'm talking about right now exclusively, is the general fund, uh, with less money than we anticipated. We expected to have a higher, uh, ending balance in the general fund than what we actually ended the year with. Um, we, you know, revenues didn't come in as quite as well as we'd hoped. Uh, expenditures, while well under budget, were a little higher than we had expected. So, for that, that's, you know, it's always, uh, again, I think we missed by, what, 300,000 was my recollection? Two-hundred-and-forty. Two-hundred, thank you. Two-hundred, this is why Stuart's here. $240,000 was the miss, which, you know, in the grand scheme of things is not a huge number, but, uh, given that we have been drawing down our year-ending fund balance in the, um, the general fund over the last couple of years, uh, it's concerning. We'd hoped that that would not be the case. We'd sort of thought we had gotten, uh, revenues and expenditures aligned last year, and that did not happen. The second piece of bad news was that our, um, estimates for property tax receipts in total for this, the year that we're currently in, fiscal year 2015, are not as high as we'd hoped they would be. And, again, our, our estimate was off by...
Two-hundred-and-seventy.
Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. So, um, I, again, that's not a catastrophic number by any means. It's just, uh, a concerning number because, um, it's less than what we had anticipated, and it represents some changes that we will have to make, uh, in how we conduct ourselves through the remainder of this fiscal year to recognize, uh, that lesser amount. Uh, the, you know, and, and one of the, the issues that's happened over the years, it used to be a pretty simple and straightforward thing to estimate what your revenues could be, and you would have a fairly straightforward, um, you know, uh, task of, of calculating how much money you would be receiving in a fiscal year. That's gotten more complicated, and, and as an illustration, not in any way as a criticism, but it, it just points out how difficult it is. Uh, we receive our, a lot of our information comes from the county, because they're the ones that collect the property tax. We missed by 270,000. The county was off, I'm told, by a million and a half, 1.5 million, uh, in terms of the impact of compression, which is the new variable, relatively new variable, um, that has really affected our ability to anticipate, uh, what our revenues will look like. And, uh, so, again, um, that combination of, of news puts us in a position where we have to look at, uh, changing how we do business to some extent. Uh, you know, we're, um, you know, when you're confronted with a disparity in your own personal budget, gosh, I'm not, I'm spending more money than I'm making. You either have to figure out, hmm, I have to make more money, or I have to spend less, or some combination. Uh, and you may, you know, in, in the, the spending less category, you may decide that you want to shift your priorities and spend, you know, less in one area, and maybe a little more in another, but, but in the end, it really boils down to those, those two ideas. And so, Stuart's gonna present, uh, and I think he's done a really nice job of sort of summarizing the situation. Uh, he's gonna present his, uh, his slideshow, which will explain, sort of, where we're at, where we think we're going, uh, where we think, uh, you know, the, the issues will be. The intention for tonight was not that this would be a decision-making night. This was just an opportunity to present information to, to you, um, you know, plant some seeds, give you the opportunity to think through the issues, and then we will reconvene again in probably January. I think maybe some years that meeting is slopped over into February, but we're hoping for January, uh, where we will talk about what we're proposing in terms of an approach to the budget. And we've always asked you at that point to give us your thoughts about the, the approach that we're taking. So, this information tonight, coupled with whatever discussions you have amongst yourselves or with people in the community that you respect, um, will hopefully prepare us for that discussion and, um, and lead to a better, or a budget that, a budget approach that we're at least all generally in agreement with before we actually get to the review of the budget. So, with that, I'm gonna keep quiet and, uh, turn it over to Stuart unless you have specific questions for me that you'd like to...
Matt, as we go along the way, uh, questions can be directed to me or to Wes, and the hard questions (laugh) will flip a coin, I don't know. But as Wes described, there's been quite a bit of thought in what information would be helpful, helpful to provide to the Budget Committee. And hopefully, uh, well, and there's a lot of information that was provided in the PowerPoint presentation, and it was intentional to provide a lot of detailed information, and some of the slides are wall-to-wall numbers, as you recognize, and we tried to follow those up with, uh, a graphical presentation of, um, one or two of the more important elements of the table. So, that was the purpose of being able to make it available a week ahead of the presentation, because it would be difficult to look at those numbers on the slide. And unfortunately, that's what our viewing audience will see, is just that screen, but I want to make, uh, them aware that you've had those numbers for a little while now and had opportunity to look at the detail with more information on the tables, as well as a graphical presentation, which is what I'll present, I'll center on, on the screen as we describe those topics, so that it's, uh, probably more beneficial to those that are viewing this evening. And before I launch into a slide, I'd like to take a personal privilege, if I could, and introduce a new senior accountant with the City of Albany, and that's Gina Jaeger. Raise her hand.[597.16][597.16](laugh). Uh, she's been with us just long enough to get involved in the audit (laugh), and we're our lead person in the audit. And Gina's done a great job, and coming up to speed very fast. And I have mentioned that on a few days. I see you're still here, so that's good. Good thing. And it's, it is quite a transition, particularly with, uh, right at the timing of developing our financial reports for year-end 2014. So, appreciate good work and hope there's opportunity for you to get to know Gina a little bit in our office. So, in the outline that you've had, as Wes kind of described, wanna give a summary of where we've been, where we are, and where we go from here. And in each of those areas, I've identified some subtopics that I think kind of illustrate, they're not conclusive and not exhaustive, that illustrate the situation or what we're trying to describe, or, or give a good indication of, of that particular, uh, topic that we're describing. So, where we've been, the two, uh, areas we'd like to focus on would be property tax and cost-saving strategies. And the property tax, of course, is based on assessed value, and those assessed values in property tax, as Wes described, is largely influenced, uh, most recently from the impacts of Measure 5 and 50, and changes in assessed value and market values in the market. Uh, and the assessed values I described, this would be wall-to-wall text. Here is the screen that follows up, and it's a little, hopefully a little easier to pull some of the really important information from. And there are three bars, uh, depicted for each of the years between 2007 and 2015. And you, you may have noticed, if you're, the one red herring I put in the handouts was at the date, the years were mislabeled on the report you have. Uh, yours starts at 2006 and ends at 2014. These numbers reflect start 2007 through 2015. So, the table is correct, the information was labeled incorrectly on the, on the chart. Yeah, Will?
So, the 2015 are the projected numbers?
The 2015 are the numbers we received from the county on the, uh, on the foray reports. So, when we receive those numbers, they give us the actual assessed value, and then we plug in the rate per thousand of assessed value.
Okay.
And those are actually calculated by the county. They give us those reports. The other variable, there is an additional variable, and actually, uh, it's important to point out, uh, but those give us, uh, the expected property tax that would be levied and the amount that would be received. The additional variable would be, well, let me describe it this way. If 100% of the property tax were paid, that's what we would receive. But we don't receive 100% of the property tax, and let me just address this issue right now. I intended to make it part of the discussion, but as we described, the property tax estimate in current year was overstated. The reason it was overstated is because we anticipated collecting a greater amount than it appears we actually will collect. That's kind of a difficult number to identify. Historically, through this, well, prior to the downturn in 2008 and '09, that number's been consistently, and as Wes described, it's been pretty, you could be pretty confident in your number. And that number historically for the City of Albany has been 93.47%. We could expect to receive that much of what was levied pretty much every year. Well, during this recession, surprisingly, we received quite a bit more than that, as much as 97% in one year. We attributed that, I think, correctly attributed it to, uh, foreclosures, unfortunately. Uh, but banks are more timely in their property tax payment. And so, this year, in, in developing, in developing the budget, that we leaned towards a higher collection rate, uh, but our, our experience in year-end 2014, which we don't have the final audited numbers yet, but it appears we overstated that amount that would be collected. And by overstating that by 1%, we're off that amount in the property tax. So, we went into the budget overstating that in, in consideration that historically, the last few years, it had been higher, and with the desire to preserve positions in the current budget. Because the trade-off is, we had to cut a position somewhere, uh, or two, to make up that amount, uh, or other areas of, of cutting reduced expenditure. So, we swayed a little bit optimistically on that number, um, and that's the difference in the budget. Because now, when I say we're off by this amount in the current budget, that's relying again on the historical 93.47%. And I'm gonna hold to that number now, because I think we'll be closer to that number than what we used in the budget. So, that's, that's a long answer, but (laugh) that's information that I felt would be useful to share as well. So, the assessed value, you can see how it reflects what we have been hearing in the market, uh, and seeing happen with other cities. It's happened a little more dramatically in Lynn County than it has in Benton County, within the City of Albany. And so, you can see the blue bar represents experience with changes in assessed value for Lynn County, uh, the red bars, changes in assessed value, uh, for Benton County, and then the green bar is combined. And then, because Lynn County has a much larger assessed value than Benton County, the combined isn't exactly, it's, an average between the two. Uh, so, in 2013, uh, as you can see on the chart and on your page, I think that's 2014, should be 2013, uh, Lynn County's assessed value did go down. In several of the prior-year budget messages for several years now, Wes has been consistent in saying, "We haven't lost revenue. We've seen a slowdown in the growth of revenue." And this depicts that very literally. So, even when Lynn County's assessed value dropped for one year, the combined assessed value still did increase between Lynn County and Benton County. And that's reflected a little more on the permanent rate, which is reflecting dollars received. And so, in the year 2013, you can see there was growth, but there's been significantly slower growth in the, in the revenues and the property tax. And it's, it is very important, because as we've mentioned several times, the property tax is the greatest, the largest revenue source in the general fund, um, followed by franchise fees, and then followed by intergovernmental services. So, because it's the primary driver, the changes in the rate of growth influence quite a bit, uh, available revenues in the general fund. Let me see, um, okay. And as, as you can see, the, the permanent rate reflects very closely the change in assessed value. As the rate is a rate per thousand of assessed value, uh, so it, it peril, it tracks very closely, particularly the combined assessed values, uh, for both counties. And that change in the growth, as Wes described too, as I've compared with other cities, um, ours has been a little, has fluctuated more than other cities, particularly those in metro area. Uh, farther north have seen, uh, not as big of change in year-to-year change in assessed value or, uh, permanent rate growth, but...
Well, if I could throw in an additional two cents, though, uh, some of the greatest fluctuations actually occurred in other parts of the state. I mean, we had nothing like what happened over in Redmond and Bend, for example, during the, when the, when the recession really hit. They were looking at, in, in many cases, not just declines in the rate of increase, but very big declines in the amount of money that they received. And, and so, uh, as Stuart points out, the metro area probably had the most stable, you know, and metro area cities had the most stable rates, but there's been volatility all over.
Yeah. And I should've mentioned at the front, yeah, it'd be good to ask questions along the way, and that's part of, hopefully, as you've had the opportunity to look at these slides, could that, ask the questions as we go. And if I can just...
Go ahead.
...lead Wade. Okay, Colleen, thanks.
Um, I have one question. On page three, it says, um, the, I guess it's the rate is reduced by HP and Comcast decisions. I wasn't quite sure about that.
Okay. In 2014, Comcast appealed the assessed value that was assigned for its, or that it was assessed from Benton County and appealed it to the state tax, uh, tax, I forget what that office is called.
Google it.
Yeah. And, uh, they won their, the appeal. Uh, for the City of Albany, in year 2014, that was a reduction in the property tax that we would receive of, it was 370, let's see...
That wasn't HP, that was Comcast. Or, I mean, that wasn't Comcast, it was HP.
Oh, did I say Comcast?
Yeah, you did.
That was the HP decision.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the current year, uh, loss of revenue due to the continued withholding, and now there, there are still some decisions being made, and there is an appeal filed by Benton County to the state. And so, Benton County is still reserving some money, and this year reserved $77,000 of what the City of Albany would have received, uh, in the general fund for, uh, outcome, potential outcomes of the Hewitt-Hacker decision. There's also a Comcast decision, and it's actually a statewide, uh, not just our counties, but a statewide decision about what constant, or what can be included in the assessed value for, um, determination of property tax amounts on the property owned by Comcast. And so, Benton County is reserving dollars for outcome of that litigation. So, both of those reduce the amount of revenue they come. And then, the reason they're footnoted there is because, uh, they don't change the assessed value. The county still identifies the same assessed value, applies the rate, uh, of what would be received, but then subtracts it from what would be received. And, Will, you had a question on this as well?
Mine is gonna be one of, uh, if you could go back, uh, to your office and shoot me a longer period, uh, because 2007, 2006 and '07, we had some of the highest increases in property taxes, uh, that we'd seen in quite a while, because property was going quite high.
Yeah.
And what would a long-term trend actually be that we, you might want to keep in mind as you're crafting your budget? You know, if we're, are we going back to that long-term trend, because we didn't expect to go back up to this 2007 change?
Yeah. If I could throw in, again, my two cents on that. When that happened, that, that period of very high growth in assessed value had two components. It had, one, the increase in value of the properties that you own, but it also, but maybe more importantly, in terms of revenue to the city, it, we were adding lots of assessed value because of new construction. We were issuing 400-plus single-family home permits per year back in the, the heyday. And I wrote, which I've reminded, I'm sure the council ad nauseam about this, but in, in 2007, in my budget message, I, I really called that out and said, "Look, these are very high numbers, and I don't think they're sustainable into the future, and I think we should increase our reserves, our year-ending fund balance beyond what we call for in our policies in order to," in recognition of that fact. Because the other thing that, that's happening is that when you're adding, um, assessed value that quickly and building that many new homes, you're building in demand for service. And so, you start staffing up, because the money's there, you start staffing up to meet the additional demand for service. And we, it's not an accident that our peak employment, I think, was in 2008, um, when we had like 428 full-time equivalent employees in the city. But we recognized, "Oops, this isn't sustainable." And so, we started programs to reduce the size of the workforce, and we're now down in three, well, without the grant-funded positions in the fire department, I think we're down...
Under 390.
Yeah, we're under 390, back to 380-something. So, um, but, to address your question of, well, what's the long-term sustainable trend? I don't know that, I mean, and I, again, over a 30-year period, I, I don't know that I could tell you, because there's so many variables that get injected into it. I mean, ballot measures that pass, for example, that, you know, you're proceeding down one, you have a set of policies, uh, that are predicated on what you know, and what you might reasonably foresee, and then suddenly something you, nobody really had any inkling was gonna happen, happens, and boom, you have to make big cuts. And, uh, you know, different cities were affected by some of these things in different ways. Um, you know, Measure 5 and Measure 50s had different, in some cities, it didn't have much of an impact at all, initially, but then down, in other cities, it was catastrophic in terms of, you know, the number of people and the number of services that had to be eliminated and changed. So, long-winded way of saying, you know, you try and make a reasoned estimate of what you think, um, you know, your revenue picture is gonna look like. And that's part of what we're trying to do here tonight, is to go over the information as we see it, and what we see, some of the, I, I, ideas and techniques that can be used to try and, and address that.
Thank you.
And now might be a good time for me to describe as well, with the idea of forecasting, that, uh, January this year will continue as we have done in prior years by bringing you the financial trend monitoring, uh, approach to identifying, uh, at least a dozen, I think, indicators that we have that show relative health, and that, it doesn't include a real long history in those indicators, but does give a reflection of, uh, kind of where we're at and where we've been in most recent. Our budget document includes a few more years than are presented here, there's nine years. Our budget document always includes at least a 10-year on histories of those different variables. Uh, but what I would want to mention, particularly in the January, instead of a forecast where we've had five years of, of estimates of one number in each year, uh, or growth, or not so much growth, we're going to bring to you a minimum, uh, a min, mid, min, mid, and max. And we're going to base the proposal, or our estimate of where we're going to be, is going to be the, the mid-line. The minimum line will be, if we had growth next year that mirrored the growth we had in the current year, then we'd see this kind of estimate. And then we'd, the min number will be, we anticipate a certain amount of growth, here's the growth we're anticipating, and then there'd be a max number in saying, "Okay, if we're quite optimistic, we could as, we could see this type of growth." But I think it'll be more useful, uh, for the Budget Committee, uh, to be able to look at a range and what's kind of gone into the thinking of the forecast. And we'll have that available, uh, at the, this year's, um, in the meeting in January, as Wes was describing. Hopefully, that'll be a, a little different look, and I think more useful information. And I think it'll involve, it will give the Budget Committee opportunity to be more involved in, in determining that estimate of growth, which I think would be helpful. So, a little bit of foreshadowing of things to come.
Thank you.
Um, based on where we've been too, because that forecast, I don't feel, has been as useful as it could be, as we could, uh, make it going forward. So then, uh, also related to the property tax is the public safety levy, and again, a lot of numbers on this slide, but, uh, the chart just showing annual percent change in what we receive in the public safety levy. And this is where we have seen, actually, year-over-year reductions in the revenue we'd received from the public safety levy. And the reason for that is due to compression. And compression in, um, and maybe I should've included a slide, I just barely thought maybe that would've been helpful. But to see the change in, actually, it's provided on the table here, and you can see, uh, in the current year, we estimate, or based on the, we don't estimate at this point, based on the report from both Lynn and Benton County, the foray schedules, we will lose a million, over a million four hundred thousand due to compression in the public safety levy.
Yeah. If I could call attention to that figure, to that 1.4 million, that's the number that taxpayers, I mean, the 1.4 plus what we actually received, is the number that taxpayers authorized that, okay, you know, we will approve, uh, a levy of X amount. Um, and of course, I, you know, it's always hard to get into the heads of what taxpayers are thinking, but, and it may not have been approved if, if compression didn't exist. People may have rebelled and said, you know, "No, we wouldn't have approved this." But it, it just so happens that that number would mean, you know, is, is the difference between, okay, we, we can manage our, our, our expenses and, and, you know, meet service-level demands, and what we're looking at as, as, I won't call it a shortfall, but what, uh, you know, is the difference between relative prosperity and a pretty difficult financial challenge. And so, um, it's an important number to, to pay attention to, that we just, we don't, we're not getting the money that voters actually authorized, you know, said they were willing to pay at some level.
And as I mentioned on the assessed value, and this chart is showing the annual change, so, where there's been slower growth or actually negative growth in, uh, the amount of the public safety levy. Uh, the bump in 2014 is when the, as Wes described, voters improved an increase in the levy from 95 cents per thousand to a dollar fifteen per thousand. So, of course, that would show, even with the compression, does show significant growth over the prior year. Uh, so, the 2015, uh, very small bar is incremental growth above the growth we saw in 2014. So, we're still seeing revenue ahead of where... So we're still seeing revenue ahead of where we were before the voters approved the increase in the levy. However, the projection going forward is probably, unless compression grows, and as I described that forecast, if it mirrors current year, then that number will go negative next year. Because compression will have taken all of what voters approved for the increase for public safety. And we'd be, we'd be receiving less revenue than we were at the 95 cents per thousand a couple of years ago. So it has a very dramatic impact. And as Wes described too, and as the table suggests, those percent changes for the amount of compression have been very difficult to estimate. Oh, that wasn't good.
Can I ask a question?
Stuart? Yes.
Is compression due to more levies coming online, or is compression due to changes on how close the taxable amount is to the true cash value?
It's a function of two variables and it is, as you described, when the market value of the properties goes down, then the Measure, the Measure 5 limits kick in. And the Measure 5 limits, I might need your help here, Corey. It's, oh, now I need the, one, two, three, four?
Yeah. Continue, Stuart.
Yeah. Well, I think I'm good here, one second.
You don't have an IP.
Oh, okay. Yes. Yeah. So as the market rate lowers and the assessment, as those two compress, the assessed value gets closer to the market value than the margin for the calculation of property tax under the two scenarios of the Measure 50 limits and the Measure 5 limits. If the Measure 50 limits exceed the Measure 5 limits, then all of the tax is compressed within the Measure 5 limits. The Measure 5 limits are based on a percent of the market value. The Measure 50 limits are based on assessed value. So as those two, as market value and assessed value get closer, there's more opportunity for the Measure 5 limits to exceed the Measure 50 limits and then be reduced within those limits. And the Measure 50 limits are $10 per thousand of assessed value for all of the overlapping jurisdictions that assess a rate. So it's difficult to describe, it's difficult to estimate. Sorry, Corey. Okay.
As I recall, that part of the discussion of the public safety levy was that we were trying to, with the new amount, hit about what we were getting with the old amount.
Right. Yeah. That was an expectation, and I think we did communicate that as part of the going forward in the election. There was discussion with the City Council about a dollar twenty or, you know, some other amount and settled on that dollar fifteen, trying to be whole. And as a mayor likes to refer to often, we go back to the original, we're in the third five-year public safety levy that's been approved by the voters. We go back, so three votes ago, voters had specific issues that they wanted addressed and that were presented in that election for that levy. And because of compression and because of the reduced funds available, as Wes described, we're not able to really meet what the citizens had approved with the dollars that are available. We're still supporting, and it goes directly to support police and fire, just not at the levels that were anticipated previously.
And bear in mind too, that it's, you can't always estimate because you're, it's not just what we're doing, it's what's happening with other jurisdictions that also have levies, like the sheriff's levy, for example. There's also been added, since we originally passed our public safety levy, you've got the 4H or--
Oh, extension.
Extension, thank you. I knew there was a word. So, you know, you can estimate what you're going to get, but, you know, what you actually get is a very, can be very different. And particularly, and this goes to your question, Will, about what happens over time, that's why it's hard to know. It really depends not only on what you're doing, but what others are doing as well.
The column that I wanted to refer to, and I won't try to use the pointer because I hit the off button. So that was my doing, is the percent change column. And from 2011, that 85% is an increase in the amount of compression over the previous year. The next year is 91% on top of the 85%, and then 24%. So as we're talking about with assessed value and its growth, the rate of growth of compression is slowing, and that's good. But it's pretty dramatic, the increases that we've seen in compression over the last few years. And hopefully, we'll grow out of that. We'll grow out of that in the two ways that Wes described as well, with increased market values, with just growth in the market, but also with new growth in the community. Although that, compression is actually a per-property basis, so that doesn't help get us out of compression unless the market values go up.
But we may be getting kind of a head start on that because you alluded to the fact that there was building going on that wasn't into the system yet, that they're being built but it hasn't been, so we might get a kind of a small jumpstart on it this coming year.
And as suggested, that would be growth that would contribute to assessed value. Until there's separation, again, greater separation between market value and assessed value, we may still see some growth in compression. So as those separate, we'll see less growth in compression and hopefully it would start to go down with future growth.
And if Theory is right, a tighter supply in the housing market would cause a greater separation.
Probably so. And our economists would be the best to fill us in on what that might look like.
People you have to pay to find out.
Okay, so those were, if there are other property tax-related kinds of questions, those were the issues that I felt would, again, be indicative of our condition with revenues in the general fund. Property tax is, of course, very unique from the franchise fees and other revenue sources, and it's quite complex. Our other revenue sources have been much, have followed a much more stable trend and are still fairly reasonable estimates. So if we shift then from the revenue side, and again, we're under where we've been on our outline, and shift to cost-saving strategies. And the ones I'd like to touch on on this screen are ways that we've implemented and Wes referred to, looking at ways to reduce our costs. And the first would be the voluntary separation incentive program. When we had three different years of the VSIP available for employees and 50 different employees participated in the VSIP in those years, some of those positions remained vacant, others were filled at a lower classification, others were combined with other positions. There were a variety of things done, but the objective was to be able to reduce FTEs without the disruption that often attends a layoff. And so we were able to, and it, I feel, it met those objectives quite well, in that employees generally that participated in the VSIP were close to retirement or had other options for other income. And so there are a couple of benefits, those are generally the higher-paid employees, and if we're able to fill at a lower pay grade, that saves a little bit, or if we're able to keep the position vacant. And COLAs, I wanted, I did include, oh, so speaking to the FTEs and what was able to, he kept vacant. And again, this chart, or this table is a lot of numbers, and there are a number of, it's really hard to present FTEs in a way where it's apples-to-apples to be able to communicate a message. And so there are three footnotes, there could be more, you know, because there's always, as Wes has described, there's a story behind each line item in the budget, there's kind of a story behind each department's experience with positions. And I'll describe that a little bit with the other slides. But in this one, want to point out the footnotes that are there, that these are authorized FTEs that are adopted in the budget. Each year, and that's a pretty set schedule, and the City Council, in adopting the budget, adopts a certain number of FTEs for each position. As we've had, like in the current year, where we've had revenue estimates that haven't met what was anticipated in the budget, and we've made mid-year changes, some of those changes have been not filling positions that were authorized in the budget. And at the time the budget was adopted, we anticipate they could be funded and filled. But there have been a lot of positions that have not been filled. But to give the apples-to-apples comparison, we're still going with what the full authorized FTE was. If, those that have been on the Budget Committee a little while, you recall, for a while we were trying to track what was authorized and what was budgeted, because in a lot of departments, those numbers were different. And we realized that, we were hoping that would be short-term. It turned out it wasn't short-term, so we stopped tracking the authorized, except for police and fire, where the Budget Committee asked that we continue to show those in the budget. So we're still showing those on those budget pages.
Yeah. And what this, and as Stuart has explained, what we've essentially done is that we've tried to align income and expenses in many years by simply leaving positions open that we might, that we were authorized to fill. We have one example that I know of right now that comes to mind is we, the Budget Committee approved the addition of an economic development administrative position to assist with urban renewal and economic development. And we have chosen not to fill that position, even though it's not a general fund position, it's still a position where some of the revenues that could be used to support it could be diverted back to the general fund if we don't fill it. So it becomes, again, we've used it, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, we've used it as a way of making sure that we, you know, don't get our expenses way ahead of our revenues.
Yeah. And I'd like to point out something to illustrate that every line has a story. So let me pick one, and that would be the community development line, that's showing a percent change of minus 51% year from 2009 to 2015. And I'd like to describe a little bit about that. Part of that is very accurate and does reflect a reduction of both authorized and filled positions, because in, as we saw the decline in the housing and in the new development and the need for inspecting new development decreased, and so we did lay off and we reduced the size of our building inspection staff. And that, size of that department was reduced pretty dramatically based on those changes. There are now, or that community development department also includes planning. And with some of the reorganization that was described, or actually was adopted in the current year budget, there are positions in community development that were actually moved to Public Works in the consolidation of the administration of those two departments. And so they were moved out of FTEs and they actually still appear in a different way as expenses in planning in the general fund, as a chargeback to the general fund. But they're part of administration now in Public Works. So again, there's a story to be told with the different departments, different operating budgets, but again, it's indicative of what our experience has been. And that's what I'd hope we were able to identify. And the change in FTEs in the 2012 budget, between the reduction in authorized positions, the use of COLAs and also the hiring chill and elimination of a leave buyback for non-representative employees, in 2012, the savings associated with those cuts was identified at over $3 million at that point. Those, a lot of those positions have stayed vacant, a lot of those cost-cutting or cost-avoidance measures carried forward in future budgets. So the reduction in where we would have been and where we are is pretty significant on the cost side, largely related to the reduction in FTEs and how we treated cost-of-living increases. And you can see, again, a lot of numbers on this page that reflect the different bargaining units and largely identified in six-month increments on what cost-of-living adjustments were available. And as you can see, there were some units, including non-bargaining and executive, where there were no increases for three years, and then intermittent increases based on available revenues. Yeah, Will?
What's the column, comp? What is that? I wasn't sure on that.
Okay. David might want to help me with this one. The sum is the, is the added, the compounding is year-over-year compounding.
Okay. That's what I was hoping it was, because--
Yeah. So it's not a change from year one to two, but compound, it's like compound interest over time is what resonates with me a little more. And then these slides, these next three slides are ones that actually you've seen previously, earlier this year in January, they were part of the presentation on where our personnel costs have been. And when we look at this chart, in the bottom part of the chart is wages and salaries. And you can see that bar has stayed pretty level over the last several years. And even within, the totals have increased, the size of the bars have gone up, and largely attributed to the benefits costs. And those costs are, as we've tried to indicate with, and again, to be illustrative of what our experience is, the cost for health insurance primarily and also cost for PERS.
What's the timeframe for Cadillac Plan assessments?
Two years from now, I think, 2016.
Yeah.
Oh, 2018, sorry. Okay. That's why we have competent people here.
That's what that coop is.
Competent.
Competent, yeah.
Competent.
That's the percentage of, no.
We also use this chart previously to mention, as we've made cuts with full-time equivalents, we've also tried to, well, we've also, it's been necessary to scale back types of expenditures. And one that's very exemplary of those changes has been what's been contributed towards equipment replacement. And police and fire, being in the general fund, have been the ones that have had to reduce for a number of years now, what's been able to fund the future equipment replacement. And we're, that will lead to, if there's not, you know, don't find other avenues for funding equipment replacement, what that would, what most cities do is eventually issue a bond or request voters to approve a bond for purchase of X number of equipment, or X amount of equipment. So we've been very fiscally responsible by being able to fund our equipment replacement in a very proactive approach. We've fallen behind that in recent years.
Although this chart doesn't show, that this year we did take money from settlement monies to fund a major equipment purchase in the fire department. So we haven't quite reached the point where we're borrowing, you know, or having to spend interest money in order to replace equipment, but we're getting there.
Excuse me, do you mean you've been spending the interest money and leaving the principal alone?
No. No, what I'm saying is, is that we haven't reached the point where we have to borrow money to purchase equipment.
We haven't yet borrowed money that we need to pay interest on above the cost of the equipment.
Yeah. And I mean, and there's different ways to do that. As Stuart said, you can sell bonds, you can enter into a lease-purchase agreement. Lots of cities do that, where they, you know, rather than buying, rather than paying cash for an ambulance out of a designated reserve, they'll, you know, agree to a lease-purchase arrangement that you pay off over a period of years. And it will, you will always, it will always have an interest cost that you would otherwise not have to pay if you save the money.
One way or another, you're going to pay for it.
Yeah.
Two more examples, and on this screen, Wes just referred to the equipment replacement where in the current year budget, and if you recall, the Budget Committee approved a loan of $300,000 from a settlement, proceeds to equipment replacement in 2015 in the current year budget. And that was to actually shift what equipment replacement had previously borrowed from the more well-funded funds in equipment replacement, so that all funds are funded with contributions they contributed to equipment replacement. And with this year's budget, that burden is now on primarily fire and police, and the obligation is back to the settlement proceeds account. So those are the history and where we are, the things that I felt would be helpful for the Budget Committee to identify where we've been. And then where we are, and Wes alluded to this in his comments as well, increased demand for services and then current year shortfall. So we can probably go fairly quickly in this section, this to identify, and of course, with the growth in population, and our growth in population hasn't been as rapid as it had been previously, but we're still seeing significant growth. And typically with growth is greater demands for services, that we see with our police and the number of Part I crimes in our community are higher than the state average. average by a significant percent. The workload per officer to be able to respond to those part one crimes and just the general calls for service, for dispatch. And then also give an indication, it's not just police and fire and throughout the city, but parks and recreation, the number of participants in summer events has increased 50% and park acreage has increased. So greater demands for services represented in those areas. Probably the most dramatic one is in the numbers offered by fire. In the fire emergency responses, there's been a significant growth in responses in the last three years. The 2015 number is a, is an estimate based on current trends in the current year. But if, and on your page, you have this chart on top and then this chart on bottom. And it's helpful to kind of look at those together to see how the increase in the number of calls or emergency responses and how the number of emergency responders to be able to adequately and properly respond to those calls. We've benefited very significantly from those safer ramp positions in the last few years.
Does the increase in budgetary expense, is that reflective of overtime being paid?
There certainly has been an increase in overtime, yes.
Some certainly is.
As far as the population growth goes, do you know how, what that looks like as far as age demographics? Are we changing much at all?
We're getting older. And one of the reasons we're getting older is that we, we keep, we increase, we're increasing accommodations for older people. There's, I guess, several ways to look at that. Makes you feel younger if you hang out with older people. But by allowing, you know, not, I mean, there's really not much we can do to prevent it, but we've had the addition of a fair number of assisted living facilities, those kinds of, you know, senior living accommodations. And, you know, clearly, I don't know, John is back there.
Is it significant, though? I mean, it's.
Yes, it is significant. The last time I looked at the numbers, we were, we were running double the number of ambulance calls that Corvallis was running. And I don't know if that's still true. John back there?
Yeah, we are, we are significantly more, and like Wes was saying, the more care facilities that are built, that's a call generator for us. For every bed that goes in of an assisted living or even a senior living facility, they say that we can count on one additional call per bed per year. So in our call numbers, around 200 beds, roughly around there, facilities can put in, that's going to be an increase of most likely about 200 additional calls just to that one facility, so.
So, yes, it's significant and, and we are different, at least from our neighboring community, substantially different because of that.
Thank you.
And those folks who use that, that newfound need, what percentage of those would have fire med?
Well, I, I think the fire med issue might be less than the Medicare reimbursement issue. We're only getting, I think it's less than 50 cents on the dollar these days for Medicare runs, ambulance runs. And so that's, that's the real heart of the problem. We, based on the increase in fire med subscription fees that we did a few years back, couple of years ago, I think we've still calculated that that's a net benefit to us financially. But what's, what's hurting us is that we're just not getting the reimbursement from, from Medicare.
So what you're saying is I should make sure I use the ambulance before I go on Medicare?
Let me think about that.
Actually, I'll, I'll give you an example, because I have my in-laws at one of our assisted living facilities here. And so I thank goodness, our fire department has had to respond several times there just when my father-in-law was living, just to pick him up. I think it was three times within a month because four caregivers still could not pick him up, you know, when he would fall and the lift wouldn't work. So our fire department was called in to help lift him up. But yet, we were paying at that point $10,000 a month for my in-laws in that facility. That's how expensive it is because Medicare does not pay for any cost in assisted living facility. But yet, the fire department is having to be called in to still help out when you're paying that kind of cost too, so. But no, it's regular. I see, between this one care facility, our ambulance is either at the independent or the assisted or the memory care. You're always seeing them coming in. I mean, in a way, it puts, senior facilities do our job creators. You know, you've got a lot of therapists there and RNs and, you know, all levels of, of jobs for each facility. I think the one care facility that was new this year was 40 employees. So it put, it creates jobs, it's less demand on our transportation system because none of them drive and yet they're being able to live there and be housed there, but you hit the demand on the fire department. That's what the downside is, it puts a big demand on the fire department, on that. So it's got its pluses and minuses. They're not cheap.
Okay, and then as we already touched on the current year shortfalls, one that wasn't mentioned was, in the current year budget, we did include a, a use of in lieu of franchise fees in the water and sewer funds if needed in the general fund. And because of those other shortfalls, it probably will be needed. We'll still monitor that, we haven't made that transfer. And if, as Wes described, with positions that are left vacant or those kinds of things, there's still hope that we won't need to transfer all that amount.
In the beginning, Wes, you said that there was an overspending of about $240,000.
Oh, no, I would never have said we overspent. I said there was an imbalance.
There were expenditures beyond the, the budgeted amount?
No, 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 no. I was very, what I, what I said.
Okay.
Because, and this, I mean, it sounds kind of silly to be this precise, but the language you use is really important. We didn't, we didn't overspend budgeted line items, that wasn't the problem. I mean, you had a budget, I mean, we had, we maybe had a few that certainly were overspent, but, but we underspent, we always underspent the total budget, okay? But we count on underspending. And sometimes in estimating what our year-ending fund balance is going to be, we count on underspending more, we think we're going to underspend more than we actually do. And that's, you had some of that going on in, as to why our year-ending fund balance is aligned. And then we also count on getting more money than we budgeted. And we didn't, that didn't happen either. So you have that combination which leads you with that imbalance of revenues to expenditures.
The two numbers I was hearing in, in that discussion were 240,000 and 270,000.
Right. The 240,000 is the beginning budget, the beginning balance was below what we anticipated it would be for the current year that we're in. The property tax current estimate, that's what Stuart said was 270,000, but his slide says it's 300,000.
Quick change.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand bucks in 20 minutes.
I'm not taking responsibility for that 30,000.
A year, that's 80 million.
The point is, is that those estimates, our, our estimates were off, is the right way to phrase it. And, and while they weren't off in terms of a 30 million plus, you know, general fund balance, those are not big numbers. I mean, you're off by not huge amounts, but.
But you have to add them together.
Yes.
So we are really possibly short the 540,000.
And that's, that was where I was going. Do we add those together? Yes.
Yeah.
Hence that in lieu of franchise fees.
Yes.
And the in lieu of franchise fee was included in the budget as a revenue. So unless expenditures are reduced by that amount, then some of that will be needed.
And there's always fluctuation from year to year because, you know, we just had, for example, we just had a resignation in a general fund position that we hadn't counted on, and it'll take us a while to fill that position. Therefore, we'll be spending less in that position than what we budgeted this year. We might have, in some years, we might have a whole bunch of those. I doubt it this year, but that has a big influence on how much money we end the year with.
Thank you.
Stuart, my, my reoccurring question, that $500,000 was a transfer and not a loan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So no anticipation that that money will go back at some future date? That's money lost to the street fund?
Yes.
Well, but I think the, the understanding that we had Floyd, we didn't structure it as a loan, but I think there was an understanding if we had availability, if we had available resources.
If you didn't need it, you wouldn't take it.
Right.
But once you took it, it's a transfer.
Well, yes, but in any future year, you can choose to make up for it. You can say, all right, well.
Based upon council action.
Yeah, just requires council action to make that happen.
And it's a gift to the other direction.
Yeah, we've had that. I mean, we.
Transfer either way.
You know, we, we, I, here was a sin, I'll tell you about a sin we committed a few years back, from my perspective now, with the benefit of hindsight. We, we transferred $300,000 into the building fund, which has to be segregated by state law because you can only use building funds for building purposes. They were having a tough time back when nobody was building anything. And we wanted to preserve service levels so that we wouldn't stifle development by having bad service, so we transferred 300,000 out of the general fund. And that was, that was no settlement money in that. That was just general fund resources because we had a pretty hefty balance at that point. And we didn't structure it as a loan, we just put the $300,000 in there. Well, right now, and the building fund limped along and gimped along and looked like it was even going to do worse, and then suddenly, last year, it just took off because there was a spate of new building going on and, and we're now, that is one of our healthiest funds in the city. They've got a very nice balance, I think it's in excess of a million bucks the last time I looked, or close to it. And, you know, we could, had we structured that as a loan, we could have brought that money back in, but we didn't. And so we can't legally now, we can't go back. And part, part of that is a state statute issue, but, you know, the point is, we can't go get it.
So you can give it, but you can't take it back.
From building.
From, building, building isn't a category all in its own.
Yeah, I realize that.
But, and I, I could, I could launch into my soapbox.
Central services charges.
Not easily.
There's something they're going to want.
Just for clarity, that's building inspection fund, not building facilities fund.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, it's building, it's building inspection. And, and I, don't get me wrong, they've done a wonderful job. I mean, and I, and I think we've done some amazing things in terms of being able to hold down on, on employee costs by, you know, the E-Docs program and the new permit plus program. We've managed to sort of automate functions that in the past would have required more administrative support. And, you know, and Gary Stutzman, the, the building official deserves a world of credit. I mean, he's now doing what three people used to do. Granted, it's in a different environment, but still, we had a building official, an assistant building official, and a head plans examiner, and he, he went from plans examiner to building official, but we didn't give him any help, so. It's been a very, they've done a great job to achieve that, you know, success.
Okay. So, okay, with the building fund, you can't take that back, but now with the street fund, isn't that dedicated funds also?
The street, we, we, we didn't take money, I mean, we didn't take any gas tax money from the street fund. What, the money that was taken was money that is contributed from a franchise fee that the city imposes on all its utilities.
Okay.
So you're right, gas tax money could not be taken from the street fund, but this was money, this is discretionary money. Franchise fee money can go where you choose to have it go.
In a comment I always make after Floyd makes his comment, is that a lot of cities, all of the in lieu of franchise fee goes directly to the general fund. It's very common.
And my counter to that, a lot of cities contribute general fund monies to the street fund for the payment of street lighting, and as little as 35% of your total street lighting bill is actually charged to the street system because it's recognized as a public safety component. And we've just heard environmental design issues come forth that substantiate that.
That, that's true.
So it, we have this back and forth, and it's kind of like being a gatekeeper.
Yeah. Those are very real issues.
Your turn.
Little budget issues. I'll concede on that point.
Oh. Me too.
Okay, then in the outline that we're following, the where we go from here, and what I've offered in this section are some considerations for alternative revenues and then just allow some discussion for what we would consider as service and program reductions. And this is, I think, what will be helpful for some, as Wes described, not really seeking direction tonight, but sharing some ideas. You may have some questions on some of these or some that are on the list that you'd like us to consider as alternative ways to formulate a budget discussion that will happen in January. So the first ones that are listed are privileged taxes. And to give you an indication of the, the value associated with increase in privileged tax, a 2% increase in the electric privilege tax would generate just $928,000 in, on an annual basis. And then comparable for natural gas increase would generate about $260,000.
And if I could duck in here, the electric utility about, I believe the number I saw was, what, 28% of cities charge 7%? We, we're currently at 5. And I think it was, what, 60-some percent charge more than 5. So we're, I would say we're below average, but we're certainly at, we're, we're at the lower level on the electric utility tax. And I don't think there's any question about our legal authority to be able to increase that if that were the policy decision by the city council to increase that franchise amount. And at least the indication with the, with early indications and discussions with PP&L is that they would not oppose such a measure if the city were interested in going down that road. Natural gas, our authority is less clear, although the most recent court ruling would, would indicate we could do it, but most likely we would end up in litigation with Northwest Natural if we tried. And most cities, nearly all, in fact, I'm not aware of any in city, any city that charges more than 5% for natural gas. But I could be wrong on that, that's, and that's information supplied by the gas companies who has, may not be the most unbiased source, but I suspect it's accurate.
So Wes, we're currently at 5% on gas also?
Yes, those two are both at 5.
So where you think we could try and get another 2%, it would most likely end up in litigation?
If we tried.
On the electric.
On the natural gas. On the electric, I don't think there would be.
Understand.
Any issue there, but with natural gas, it appears that that might be the case.
So why is that? What's the legal limit on gas on the?
Well, the wording of the statute, and I, I had a long discussion with the city attorney about this today, the wording of the statute limits the level of privileged tax or franchise fee that a city can charge if it does not have a franchise agreement. Well, we, of course, and it limits it to 5%, we do have franchise agreements. And there is no limit that we can find on what you can charge through a franchise agreement. And the courts, at least as best as Jim could explain it to me, the courts have upheld that position, that if we wanted, if we could negotiate an agreement with Northwest Natural and charge 7%, that we would be legally authorized to do that through a franchise agreement. But they're, they, they of course are not happy to see any increase in, you know, their, the costs that they bill to their customers, and so they've tended to fight, fight that. And I have asked for a review of the last Court, Court of Appeals decision on the subject to the Supreme Court, and my understanding is that that issue is, the Supreme Court is, has yet to make a decision about whether they'll actually hear that appeal. So, again, I, you know, that's, those are legal issues I can't opine on.
I guess I have a bit of an issue with the idea that you have two kinds of energy that compete with each other, and you're going to tax one 2% more than you're going to tax the other. I mean, if, if it's reasonable to tax, we ought to be doing the same thing, whatever it is.
Yeah, well, and of course, part of the whole issue with this is, it, you know, sometimes it's called a privileged tax, in fact, Stuart refers to it up there as. sometimes it's called a privilege tax, in fact, Stuart refers to it up there as privilege tax. Another term that I've always used is franchise fee, because the utilities derive a benefit from the public right of way, the use of the public right of way. It's a special benefit that we don't all enjoy, and they make money, because they're able to string their wires and run their poles, and, and, you know, and that was a trade-off. It was, like has been done throughout the history of the United States, where government grants to private entities certain privileges in exchange for certain things. We gave away half the country to get the railroads built, and, and in return, got railroads. So, you know, the franchise fee as payment, or it's basically, it can be regarded as payment of rent for use of public facilities. In the end, you know, one of the reasons I haven't pushed this in the past is a, is a revenue raising source, 'cause it's about the last thing that's left to us of any significance. I mean, we can't really, asking the voters doesn't do us much good for ongoing operating revenues because of compression. You know, raising fees for some of the services that we provide is pretty small. I mean, what we can really get, what people would really be willing to pay. So franchise fees are, are all you've got left. But one of the problems with them is, of course, that they fall disproportionately on people. I mean, pretty much everybody's gotta have electricity, or if you chose to go to the other utilities, to water and sewer, everybody has to have that. But, you know, and it's one thing for someone with a good income to be able to pay that little bit of, I mean, 2% on a, on a $100 electric bill is, you know, a couple of bucks a month, and you think, alright, most people can afford that. But if you add that on top of all the other different things that go into the basic quality of life of an individual, you, it doesn't take long before you're at a, at a very unaffordable place.
Well, PP&amp;L, or P, or the gas company, do not really pay the tax.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Just like, just like me, I, I own a business, my business doesn't really pay tax. What that is, is an expense of doing business, so when you buy oxygen, you're paying my tax. And it's, it's always bothered me that what government in general does many times is tax the people, so the folks, the end user does not understand they're being taxed. They don't see it, they don't know it.
Well, I mean, we could get into theories of taxation.
That's not-
There's no, there's no easy way, in my humble opinion, to, you know, come up with all the revenues that are required, given all the circumstances that you confront these days in, in trying to, to, you know.
I, I don't disagree with you, I'm just, I'm frustrated by the idea.
Are our neighboring cities at similar rates to what we're at now?
Uh, there's, they're kinda all over the board, I'd have to-
I mean, I don't mean the overall rate, but just the tax.
We're not, I mean, we're consistent, I think, with what pretty much other places are doing right now.
As Wes described with kind of the percent, 35% of rates are above 5%. 65% are 5% or less. Most are at 5%. 25, so about 26% are at 7%. As I talked with the electric company, they described, they're seeing changes among cities, and the changes they're seeing are from 5% to 7%.
And I would add that this was basically suggested or offered up by the electric company several years ago. I was approached by a representative saying, you know, you could raise your, your franchise fee, because other cities, other cities in our service area are doing that. And I said, "Well, I'd like to avoid it for the reasons we've discussed here. It's just, it's another piece that people have to pay." But, I think it, you know, that really shouldn't be my decision. I, it's a decision that, particularly when you're having to make a choice between cutting services and raising revenues, that's definitely a policy choice that the council ultimately gets to make.
Okay. An additional avenue that's suggested, and we refer to the in lieu of franchise fee on the bottom as well, but the, the one I wanted to mention right under other, we have 2004 revenue obligations, where the parks and recreation department is still making payments on debt that was incurred. And that's about $200,000 a year. If we were to use settlement proceeds to pay off the balance of that debt, which currently is, the current year principal balance is $940,000, it would save about $140,000 in future interest costs. It would allow then a reduction in the property tax that's given to Parks and Rec of 1% and without impacting service levels in Parks and Recreation, 'cause currently that 1% is being applied to the payment of the debt.
Is that $140,000 total cost or per annum cost?
That $140,000 is total interest savings over the remaining, and that matures in 2020.
Yeah, and the reason-
So there's still six-year payments.
Yeah, and the reason we didn't choose to, you know, we, we looked at all our debt when we got the settlement money with an eye toward what could we pay off that would save the taxpayers money. And we, there was really only one debt that we ended up saving about a million dollars in interest costs over the life of that, that particular bond. The rest of them, the, you know, if you did sort of a net present value analysis of the debt, didn't yield enough savings to really make that big of a difference. What Stuart is saying here is though, that with this one, you know, you could take, we're earning so little money in, in interest on money that we have in the bank, you could take the settlement proceeds now, and that would free up a couple hundred thousand dollars a year that could then be used to fund, you know, general fund operations. But, but it would require a decision, a policy decision by the council to do it.
Okay, and then the others that I wanted to throw into the mix for consideration, there's been question at different times about underleaving CARA. And because of the way the allocation of overlapping taxing jurisdictions, and any, any under levy of the assessment on CARA would yield about 33.23% of the under levy to the city of Albany, and the remaining amount would be spread among the different taxing jurisdictions. Then the others that are identified there, the stopping contributions to outside organizations, and what, what is in the current year budget being allocated to those organizations would be a savings. And then a reallocation of the transient lodging tax, which has also been one that's under consideration with the city council on how those dollars can be, could be allocated. And the current limits that we have on the use of transient lodging tax are actually those that are described in 2003, whatever level of contribution we had in 2003 towards tourism and tourism promotion facilities, established our ratio of that lodging tax that we need to continue applying for those purposes. Any new or increased transient lodging tax has a different requirement. And rather than the 2003 levels, any new or additional transient lodging tax has a 70-30 split. And 70% of any new or increased transient lodging tax would need to be devoted towards tourism and tourism-related facilities. So there are actually two measures under the statute, so what's being suggested here would be the measure of existing lodging tax at the ratio that was established in 2003, which was the benchmark when the current statute was put in place.
And we have not had any new transient lodging taxes imposed since that new statute went into effect. So we're under the old formula.
Make sure I'm understanding correctly. The original has to be used in the way it was used, or specifically the place it was used?
It has to be used for the purpose.
Purpose.
Right, yeah. For tourism promotion.
Yeah.
Maybe the, the, into the weeds discussion comes a little later. Could you give us an overview, or maybe Kate could, on, on the mechanism for underlevying, and how that would relate to some of the processes we're doing with CARA? If money goes back to some of the other taxing districts that are already possibly asking us for funding? It seems like it's, some of these things are kind of mingling a little bit.
Well, I can give you, you know, you know, I think a reasonable approximation. I mean, clearly, you would not under levy to the point that you couldn't meet your debt obligations that you have for, for CARA, so that's your, your first thing. You're gonna carve out, you're gonna levy sufficiently to meet all your obligations. So if you under levy, you're only under levying that amount which exceeds your, your obligations. Now, the discussion about giving money to other jurisdictions is, is, we've never, or at least, I don't think we've had any recent discussions about giving urban renewal money to other jurisdictions, it was transient lodging tax, and the two are not, you know, there's no, there's, there's nothing that really relates, I mean, you, you could argue, I mean, you can make a political argument and say that, well, gee, if we're gonna under levy, that's sending X amount of dollars your way, so we don't need to send X plus dollars your way. I mean, that's one way of looking at it. But they're not inherently related, I guess.
And underlevying is only for the one year that you under levy?
That's correct, you can-
It's not a continuation of a policy?
No, you can choose to, I mean, it's a, you're, you're given that choice every year.
Yeah, once you give it to them, they're gonna want it next year too.
People, yes.
That's kinda normal.
Yep.
Don't take it away.
What's the total value we current levy, currently levying?
It's about two, oh, the-
What's the, the public's-
Yeah, monthly receive, I think. I think it's just over $2 million. Kate can-
That's right. Yep, it's just over, just over $2 million. So for example, if you guys were looking to have net $500,000 come to the city of Albany, you'd have to under levy by 1.5 million, 'cause about 33% comes to the city of Albany. The next biggest piece would go to the state of Oregon, 24% into their general fund for schools, and then broken down proportionally amongst all the taxing districts. And in terms of the notification process, Councilor Kupczynski, it's, it's a simple process whereby you notify the assessor that you intend to under levy. And I believe you can either do it as a specific amount, or as a percentage of the taxing current amount. And there's a deadline by which you have to notify, which I think is the end of June for the following year.
I'm thinking of possible potential, it's just some of the ripple effects of doing anything. There's always consequences, so that would potentially just slow down and/or delay some of the processes and projects that we're wanting to do, but it wouldn't, wouldn't stop it, it would just-
Yeah, and good point to, or good time to emphasize the point, that all the things that we're putting up here have consequences, and probably most of them are gonna be negative to somebody. So we're not offering these up as suggestions of, you oughta do this. We're just saying, these are things that, you know, are on the table that you could look at.
Am I right that we have a certain amount of money we have to spend to finish up our urban renewal process? Something like 56 million, or something like that?
Well, yeah, if, if you under levy, and then you're right, you could be, you could be increasing the term of your-
And don't we have a limit, time limit, in order to get our project done?
No.
It can go on forever and ever if we never finish it up?
I don't know about ever and ever, but it can go on for a long time, yeah. They've been around, there are urban renewal districts that have been around for many, many years.
If I could inter-
I was on the impression there was a time limit.
I'll let, I'll give you the-
Counselor, I'd, I'd be happy to answer that. The way that works is, the plan outlines the maximum indebtedness number, and that's the really important number, that's the agreement, that says how much of the money you're gonna use. Ours is 56 million, so you're exactly correct. It outlines an estimated time at which the urban renewal district would be complete, and ours is estimated to be the year 2026, 2027 fiscal year. But that is merely an estimate. So to Wes's point, the urban renewal district doesn't finish and complete until you have borrowed and then repaid that 56 million. So to under levy postpones the borrowing, and hence the repayment, and, and increases the duration timewise of how long the district would be around.
Sharon? So, was there any other questions on that, or I had a different subject? So over the alternative revenues, there was another item that I was, it would be nice to add to. This is like a parking lot list, and it's just something, no decision, it's just keeping it back in our mind. But I have seen almost two decades now budgets, and we have struggled in our street fund in all, you know, all these years. And we do hear constant complaints, people complaining about our streets and the condition that our streets are in. You know, what, about 10 years ago, I think it has been, we did the street bond that was passed by the voters, and we were able to at least keep up with some of our major collector's streets. But we have a lot of local streets that really need a lot of upgrading. And I don't see us being able to really get enough revenue to take care of our, our streets. A couple months ago at the League of Oregon Cities, there was some roundtable discussions going on with Oregon mayors, and I was surprised to see how many small communities that were even, you know, communities that were 2, 3,000 population and up to Eugene, having their own local gas tax. And that is something that we looked at, probably, was it 98? And we looked at it, and we had a lot of people kind of in opposition then. But ever since then, all these years, you know, our gas prices right now are low, but it'll go up probably another buck a gallon, we'll see it again. And nobody seems to complain when it's going dollars outside of our area to the oil companies when they raise it. But to even keep a nickel gas tax locally, I just can't see nowadays anybody really complaining about a nickel gas tax. But if we would've had that nickel we were looking at back in 98, I always, I wonder, what would our conditions of our streets be today? Because we would always have had a continuing revenue source for our streets for maintenance, 'cause we cannot rely on the state and federal gas tax revenues. Even what, if, even if they increase it at the state or federal level, I still don't think it's enough for our overall need for what we're gonna see for what the cost of reconstructing streets are. So I think something to maybe just keep on, a little parking lot. If it's something we, you know, if the budget committee wants a blessing to have the council look at, or to get some public input of having a local gas tax.
The city of Portland's going through some fund discussions on how to fund their street issues.
Yeah, and there's a lot of it. I think they were saying a 7-Eleven was gonna be, I saw on the news, 2,100 a month. It's really more fair to all consumers to have it be as the gas tax. I know there's the, you know, folks that don't think it's fair, because there's the, you know, electric vehicles, but that's a very small amount compared to the overall, you know, consumers of gasoline. And it's more fair how you use the gas, is basically you're paying more by how you use it. Instead of if you did a fee per household, or per, per dwelling or business, that sometimes might not be as fair. You might have, you know, five vehicles or five drivers in one house up against a little old lady like my mother that goes to, you know, the grocery store once a week, that would pay the same amount. So this would be more of a fair tax, because it would be all users, you know, as you use it, you would pay more. It's something to consider, I mean, I, I think it's time, after all these years, many communities have local gas tax, and it really helps with their street system. And that would probably maybe help Counselor Collins' concern of the franchise fee, of transferring it to the general fund, but anyway, it sort of helps the general fund in some way. But thoughts about adding that to a parking lot list? We don't have to make a decision, just ponder on it.
Well, I think it raises a question of, how do we, how do I identify future alternative revenue look at? Whatever we select, if we wanna select any, I think it needs to come back with kind of an impact. And Stuart obviously had some information there tonight, dealing with other utility fees. That's one of the questions I would have, what are the surrounding communities doing? What's being done statewide? You know, what are the funds dedicated to? Same thing, if we're considering gas tax, what communities have them? What are they set at? How are they being restricted? If, and those are then future choices on the revenue side, in addition to the choices we're gonna have on prioritization of the expense side.
I think it would be great information to have, and I think it'd be, you know, we would really want to make sure we do our homework and find out what other, other communities are, and what the projection of revenues would be, what, what we could do with those dollars. But I think it needs to be council giving direction for staff, or even if the budget committee would like to, to proceed in that direction. Staff's not gonna go out and, once you start doing all the research, if they don't think they're gonna have, you know, the council really wanting them to do that research.
Yeah, no, we, we can certainly look at it, and I know there was a, there was a moratorium on, or moratoria, I guess, on local gas taxes, but I think that lifted here within the last couple of years. So I think they're on again as an option for communities to consider.
That, you, you would project to be-
That, you, you would project to be dedicated funds for street repair only?
They have to.
By, by the, by the Constitution, the Oregon Constitution says you may not use gas tax for anything other than road-related purposes. We might wanna get into a, a very heavy tax on bicyclists, they're causing, a lot of complaints about leaves and other things that we.
Yes, yes.
Yes. You gotta grin from also.
I wasn't sure that was a grin.
Yeah, I'll probably see my name in the blogs tomorrow.
So, so, yeah, I mean, is it okay to put it on a parking lot?
Yeah.
So, it's worth exploring, you might not go anywhere, but at least we can find out, do our due diligence, whether it's.
Bicycle tax.
You know, what, what this really pointed, the discussion tonight really points out is what, if Jeff and Scott were here, their comments for the last several years, is that is, part of what we need to do is look at both sides of the equation. The expense side, which means prioritizing where we're spending our money, and the revenue side, where do we have revenue enhancement, if at all? And we're caught in that dilemma, that, given the, the way Oregon governments are financed, there's a point that you come, that you're gonna hit the edge of the cliff, and we've taken a lot of low-hanging fruit, not always painlessly, but we've taken it. We've got a couple of things to evaluate, some less painful than others, but those choices between prioritization of the services we deliver, and the revenues that are required to support those, we're coming to the edge of that, that cliff, that we're gonna have to make some really tough choices. And that's what, when Jeff was a council member, and when Ralph was here, those were, that was their litany, and Scott has been picking up on the same thing for the last year.
Yeah, and I'd like to take some credit as staff to say that we have tried to be as straightforward about what we're doing every year with the budget as we can be, you know, laying out some of the dangers and some of the, the, the issues. And for me, one of the bottom-line issues that we have to be concerned about as a city is, basically, it's like what you have to be concerned about as a, as a, as an individual. You know, what's my credit rating like? If I needed to get money, could I get it? And for a city, that's our financial ratings, and our ratings have been good, and they remained good, but I guess the, the message that I would be, that I would deliver tonight is that they won't stay good if we don't make some, some decisions. And the days that we could pick some of the low-hanging fruit are probably past. Now, I don't, and, you know, I know I get accused of being an optimist too much, but there is, you know, it's not all gloom and doom. I mean, we do expect to see some growth, and some growth in assessed value, that may help us somewhat, but I just don't think it's gonna come fast enough to solve the problem. I mean, I think we have to make some of these decisions about getting some additional revenue, or, or, or changing or doing away with some of our services.
The, the strategic plan is probably the big encompassing thing that drives the whole process. How much, how, how will that potentially be affected by some of the annual discussions that, like, we're having now? Is that going to make a massive change in the strategic plan?
Well, yeah, and I, I guess the answer is, is that that one's really up to, to you and the citizens of this community. I mean, we, we've, the strategic plan has been reviewed by the council, and we as staff propose things, and we'll have some new proposals this year, and we've tried to sort of make it reflect financial reality, where we don't put things in there that we think, oh, gosh, we'll never be able to afford that. And we've scaled back some of our.
Okay, so some of it's already starting to happen based on what's happening here?
Oh, it happened in, in the past. We took things out that we thought, wow, that's just not a realistic, we've even, and we've even dropped some service-level measurements, that said, eh, we can't achieve that standard. In general, I think we've done a really good job, and, you know, I just heard from Mark Shepard today that, that our Public Works Department, it just went through its accreditation audit, and apparently things look pretty good there, and, of course, we've continued to try and maintain high standards for, you know, excellence in financial reporting. We just got our Police Department accredited not too long ago. So, there's, you know, we're not, we, we want to try and achieve high standards that are measurable, and that can be independently verified, so it isn't just us saying that we're good, it's, you know, somebody else saying it too. But, you know, that's, that, we're, we're still not doing everything that we, we believe we probably should do.
In the same vein that Floyd and Scott, everything does not have the same value, everything we do, and even though it's nice to have everything, sometimes, well, we all have the choice of having to do less than we wanted to. I think it would be of value for the departments to come up with, and, and this is not, the, the shortfall here is not much of a percentage, but to have a percentage of the things in their departments that are going to hurt the least if they go, and that's not to say that they don't hurt, but ultimately, the body on the dais has to make the tough choice, and that can be extra funds, or it can be fewer things, or a combination of the two, but I think we do need to have, at their disposal, the things that make the, the best sense from their perspective, because they're the ones delivering the services. Strain through your experience, and, and it wouldn't even have to come to us unless we, you know, until we get to the point where it's necessary. I, you know, it's not something you wanna blare out in the middle of the street, but I think you have to have it available.
Well, and, and I don't disagree at all, which I think, in fact, it's a good notion that you're prioritizing, you know, the value of the different things that you're doing. I will say this, we've been forced to do that to some extent, I mean, you know, you saw the numbers on, for, you know, 28 employees versus, the real number is like 385, you know, so you've, there's already been a fair amount of, how could we do this differently? What might we be do with a software correction, and, you know, who can step in? And, of course, Bessie's been, gives me the stink eye every time I start talking about, you know, adding additional workload to somebody, because we've eliminated a, a position, and rightfully so, it's a tough thing. But, but sure, I mean, you know, the, the tougher thing is when you start, you know, it's one thing to say, I mean, if I were to say to John in fire right now, with, you know, given the steep increase in the number of calls that you're taking right now, you know, what could you cut that would have the least impact on your department? He'd probably throw something at me, because he feels like that he's kind of at the, you know, at the.
Well, I'll, I'll get him at Kiwanis next week.
Okay, well, and, and I'm sure, I mean, any other department, the, the tougher job is when you start trying to rate, and, and there are communities that are doing this through, you know, different processes, where you're, you're trying to assign values to what do you think are the most important functions in your community, and it gets really tough. I mean, how do you equate, and I'll use it as an example, because it always makes Stuart squirm, is the, the swimming pool. You know, that's a, that's a big-ticket item that the city took on some years ago. We assumed that responsibility for the school district, and I think it's, what, a half-million dollars a year?
It's actually in the range of $700,000.
Okay, so it's $700,000 a year, you know, I mean, you know, so if you were, if you're bumping that up against other services, you know, how do you, you know?
Ultimately, that would be our job.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, it's, it's, well, they would know, okay, you're gonna, if you do away with it, you're going to save $700,000, but it's gonna cost whatever. They know that information. It's gonna be, you know, there's the, the positive side, and there's the negative side, and then you have to tell, you know, 1,500 people that they can't go use that pool. I mean, that's, that's why we get paid the great big dollars. And I, I think it's information that we need to have, because you can't, and I can't expect a Parks Director and a Public Works Director, and the Fire Chief and the Police Chief to say, no, no, your thing is more important than your, 'cause, you know, they know their thing very well, but they don't know the rest of it. And I think it's just something that we need to have in our quiver of, of potential cost-cutting arrows, or if that's the case.
Rich, don't we already have that information in the existing budget as to what their departments are doing?
No.
No?
They have a list of the, the things that are, but, I mean, if you, you look at any, any leader of an organization, they're going to have a pretty good idea of the next thing that you know. They spend the money the way they spend it, because that's the best way that they can get the total job done, but they're gonna have a good idea of the thing that, well, this thing over here is gonna cost us, and if we do away with it, it'll hurt the fewest number of people. And they'll know, they'll know a whole lot of that.
That's what.
Right. They know the, the kinds of things those are, and we don't, especially if you're looking at pieces of paper with numbers on them. I mean, it's, you have to put the human thing back in it, and they have the ability to do that.
And, and, Rich, I, I don't disagree, again, I, I would say, one of the ways that we've been different than a lot of cities in trying to, to, to have that exercise take place, is that over the last four or five years, what we've tried to do is take the sum of money that we believed is available, and ask, and rather than asking the Police Department, and the Fire Department, and the Parks Department, what do you need, we say, here's how much money we have. Make do with what that percentage is, and that's how we've, and that, that forces choices, the kind of choices that you're talking about.
But it doesn't force the choice ultimately, I mean, the people who got elected are the ones who have to make the final choice, and you have a kid who needs to have a place to swim, and you have someone who needs to make sure that they don't get beaten up, well, to me, that's not a question. It's, you, you save the kid who's not gonna get beaten up. I don't wanna not have a place for the kid to swim.
Yeah.
But ultimately, those are the kind of choices we're left with at the, the far end, where we've come down to the needy-bready.
We'll do our best.
I'd like to chime in just a little bit, and I, I wanna take a little bit of exception to what Wes has said as an approach. I understand that there's a central authority that tells people what they need to live with. That's an ultimate decision. I think one of the most important things that a department head does is tell you what they need to meet the objectives that's in the strategic plan. You then have to evaluate that versus what you have to allocate, and they can tell you what the impact is. I, as a department head, I fought central finance to the nail when they said, you've got X dollars, without ever asking the question of what's the consequence?
Well, we've always.
Department heads know that.
Yeah, they're wishing, I can just hear them wishing right behind me, that you were still a department head to fight the evil city manager that implemented this. Floyd, over the course of my career, that's how I've generally tried to do it, is exactly how you described.
I understand, but that's not what the comment was on the floor.
When things get really tight, as they have started to get, at some point, you have to focus on how much do you have?
That's right.
And that's what we've, that's the technique that we've used. The problem, I mean, I, I respect and believe that that's a great way to do it, but, you know, if the pot's only so big, it's only so big.
That's the ultimate choice.
Yeah.
But I think, using the Police Department for, as an example, if you say, if the chief says, I need X dollars, and you said, but you're only gonna get 92% of X, the chief needs to tell you that in his estimate, part one crimes are gonna go up by 14%, or whatever that number is.
Yeah.
And then that's the choice that this group has to use to prioritize, what you have made an administrative decision about and how to allocate, and, and that's your job to make that initial call. It's our job to make the call on what the impact is.
Yeah, and that's, and that's absolutely right, and, and I hope that, you know, and I think we've tried to conduct our budget hearings this way in the past, where, you know, when, when the chief, chiefs, or any other department director comes forward, that you as a, as a budget committee have the, the opportunity to ask them, what does this do to your operation? And I, I, I hope that as an organization, and I, I think the directors would tell you this is true, that I would never criticize a director for saying, I just don't think I'm getting as much as I need to do these parts of my job. I mean, we've had, you've heard those statements, I think, from department directors in the past, and, you know, most of them are gone now, of course, but.
Are they gone or retired?
They're, they're still here.
Came right here and home.
I mean, I think they've been able to do that without retribution, at least that's my hope.
Wes, you had said before that some cities are doing, I don't know how you exactly said it, about the priorities now, and I hate to, I hate to talk about Scott, what he said when he's not here, but he had another commitment, so he couldn't be here, but he, he mentioned to me that his idea, maybe it's the same thing as other, other cities are doing, take everything off, like, everything.
Zero-based budget.
Yep, and then start putting back the most important.
Well.
Okay, like, say, I mean, like the police, you, to me, you, a safe city, but you see how the, their calls are so much more than any other city in the state? And to me, it's a shame to not have the officers that we need on the street. And so, but anyway, that kind of was his idea, and so was that what you were saying that other cities are doing, is like, starting with a blank sheet?
Yeah, what, what is now being called, I mean, budgeting, you know, there's all kinds of different sort of budgeting theories and ways that you can do it. What I, you know, I actually went to a workshop on what's called priority-based budgeting, and we do most of the elements of priority-based budgeting in our budget process that we have here. Oregon is unique, I, I think, I think this is true, may be wrong, but I think we're the only state that has this, a legally mandated budget committee. Most states, you know, when you talk about a budget committee, they kinda go, huh? That's the city council's job. So, Oregon's a little unique in that respect, and, and it, and because of this process, we do a lot of that, you know, have that discussion, go through that. One of the, the elements of priority-based budgeting is to, is an attempt to assign values, this is kind of what Rich was talking about, citywide, about, okay, is this a priority one issue, or is this a priority two, or a priority three? You know, you assign a numerical value to it, and, you know, by virtue of having enough people involved in it, then you get, then get a picture of what's most important to your, in your community. You know, I, I mean, that's, that's an option. We could look at, at, at doing some kind of a rating system. It, it's a little more systematic, certainly, than what we've been doing, which is where we've sort of said, all right, here's our performance measures, we're gonna try and accomplish, you know, meet these performance measures that we've established over time and that we put into our plan. You know, it, it kind of boils down in the end to what you, as a council and budget committee, wanna see. And, and you have to recognize too, I mean, a lot of times, things that get sold as being objective and, you know, sort of quantitative, are in the end, pretty subjective. I mean, you know, you put a one on a swimming pool, or you put a one on a police officer, and you put a.
A, a quick analogy would be like, like in Kara, for several years, we got a point-based system and tried to rate things, and we had these numbers, and we looked at them and said, no, we don't, we're not gonna blame that, we're just gonna go and do our own thing. And that didn't go, work too well. We happen to like the number system, because it is more structured, but then you get all the subjective humans involved, so.
But, but yeah, we could certainly come back with some concepts on, on perhaps how we might do that through our strategic plan structure, because it's, again, we're doing a lot of the elements of it already.
I think I might point out that originally, the old Swanson Pool was built because large numbers of kids were drown, drowning in the river, 'cause that's where they could find a place to swim. It'd be interesting, maybe, to go back and look at those days, and see how many kids died of drowning versus how many kids died from being beat up, or whatever. So, are swimming pools valuable? I think they are.
Yeah, and, please, Dick.
Eight-two, 97.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a huge, I'm not, I was using that, and I have used it before, strictly as an example, not as a personal preference or a belief of mine, I, I, you know, Stuart would.
No, he doesn't, just to upset me.
Just to give it, Stuart is a regular user of the pool, and I, I mean, it's a great facility, and I think our folks have done a wonderful job in, in. in, in...
I've used it once. I was mayor when I was dedicated and I went for a swim.
Well, you know, and we do, I should also add that it leverages in a wonderful donation every year.
Yes.
That is used to teach children how to swim. And I mean, it's, it's an incredible asset in the community.
It also leverages a lot of tournaments and a lot of...
It has an economic development component.
It's a destination in Albany.
Yeah.
It does. And, you know, I also have to, I haven't mentioned this, but commend the fire department too for the life jacket, you know, rental or to be able to come to the loaning program because boy, I tell you, we were seeing in throughout Oregon, many drowning deaths with many, within many waterways, but boy, we, we really lucked out this year along our Willamette River and it had a lot of use this year in the Calipoya because we had a very, you know, nice warm summer, but it was kind of, it was pretty sad to see how many, you know, drownings there were statewide, but I kind of commend our fire department for that really, you know, real strong advocacy over life jacket, you know, loaning life jackets. So I think you lost those several, wasn't it? Wasn't there several chief that...
Yeah, quite a few disappear every year, but that's okay. I believe it's the Kiwanis Club that, that does support us purchasing those and also through our Community Assistance Fund, we keep repurchasing those and it's an extremely valuable program. I think we've probably had that going about eight years now. And part of the reason why we got it going was we were seeing, we were responding on a number of drownings and realized we needed to take action. And in doing that, we've seen the number of, of drowning deaths decrease significantly in, in our area.
And when you said the pool costs $700,000, was that a combination of two or was that the community pool? You said it cost that much?
I think the total, yeah, it's over $700,000 for the, the operation of both pools.
But is that...
And then there's a net.
That's what I...
Yeah. So it's, it's far less than that in terms of the net.
That's what I want to know, what, what's the net?
And I don't have a net yet, I see, but it's, wait, at the community pool, we generate about $250,000 in revenue a year, so that is a significant offset. So the community pool operates at about a, a fifty percent subsidy. The Swanson Pool operates at ninety-two percent cost recovery. So much different figures.
Yeah, because I knew it couldn't, there had to be a net there somewhere because it wasn't just cost because it, I know that have a lot of tournaments and brings a lot of funds in.
And then the tournaments and also which does bring, you know, motel tax revenue, which, and we don't use any motel tax revenue for our swimming pool, which we probably could, it'd be eligible on. So two reasons.
I think we're talked out.
Unfortunately, the, every single one of them is.
So when we get back together in January, what we have at that meeting? Do we get the progress of the current year where we're at?
Certainly we'll have, I mean, and you can check that every day, of course, if you're bored. There's, you know, a, a status report on the budget that's available online. We'll probably also come back with some recommendations about how we're proposing to build the budget and assumptions and, and I mean, you know, I, I would suggest discussion amongst council members and budget committee members about, okay. And, and in the end, a lot of the big policy decisions are, fall on the shoulders of the council, so feel free to tell them what you think. It's my advice.
Thanks.
We're here for you.
In January, we want to find out how the fortune cookie paid off.
Yeah, yeah, I'm hoping. I, I ask Stuart pretty regularly if he's found any money.
And I tell him that's not a good question to ask in finance. We don't find money, we keep track of money.
All right, that's great.
Maybe if I could just invite, as you have some of those discussions and questions come to mind or if there are issues that weren't on the parking lot at this point that you'd like to have put on the parking lot, please give a call or send an email or let us know and we'll incorporate those into what's brought back in January.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Meeting adjourned.